Welcome back, everyone. Thanks for sticking with us. We're here for part two of our candidate forums for Rye City Council. I'm Leah Dembitzer. I'm a current member of the Scarsdale League Women Voters and I'm its immediate past president. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to serve as your moderator for the Rye City Council Candidate Forum. I want you to know that I do not live in Rye, so I'm not familiar with the candidates or the issues facing Rye. In the second of tonight's forums, there are four candidates vying for three council seats beginning January 2022 for four-year terms. The candidates are Julie Souza, Ben Stacks, Bill Henderson, and Lisa Tannenbaum. Welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The speaking order of candidate opening statements, as drawn from a hat by the host organization prior to the forum, is as follows. This is for opening statements. Lisa Tannenbaum will go first, Julie Souza will go second, Bill Henderson will go third, and Ben Stacks will go fourth. I'm sorry, Bill Henderson, Ben Stacks. The closing statements will be given in the reverse order. Opening statements will be a maximum of one and a half minutes. Following the opening statements, there was a question and answer portion with a total of approximately 10 questions. Questions were created by the Rye, Rybrook, Portchester League and were also solicited from the public prior to the event. Audience questions were vetted for relevancy to office by a committee of the league. The candidates did not see the questions prior to the forum. The candidates will have a maximum of one and a half minutes to respond to each question. After each candidate has had the chance to answer a given question, candidates will be given an opportunity for a brief 30-second rebuttal or mini-comment. The time limit for the rebuttal is 30 seconds, as mentioned, and it's only allowable for the topic at hand. Candidates may rebut a statement or position by their opponent or clarify their own answer, but not address a previous or other topic. Following the question and answer portion, all candidates will give a closing statement for which the time limit is one and a half minutes. The timekeeper this evening is John Leonard. He will hold up a 30-second sign when there are 30 seconds of time remaining and a stop sign when it is time to stop. When the time is up, the candidates may finish the sentence they have started. The timekeeper is visible on your screen, so you can see when you're out of time. I will enforce the time limits. I would also like to emphasize that any response or statement that is a personal attack or of hostile nature will be considered out of order. We will now begin with opening statements. Ms. Tannenbaum, you may go first. You have a minute and a half.
Thank you, Leah. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters for arranging this candidate forum. Thank my fellow candidates for participating and the Rye voters who are giving their time to listen to us. I also want to thank the current council members for their service, especially Sarah Goddard, who's leaving the council. It's been a rough few years for everybody, and Rye has made it through in good shape. Moving here, I didn't know what truly wonderful Rye was, the generosity of spirit, the Rye Art Center, Wainwright, and the other treasures that make Rye so special. I haven't lived here very long, but I intend to stay. I'm here for Rye's future, which leads me to why I'm running for Rye City Council. While working for our former congressman Elliot Engel, I saw how much could be achieved for communities when federal, state, county, and local elected officials work together. But I just didn't see it happening as well as it could for Rye, even though we've got major issues we can't solve alone, like flooding and Milton Harbor dredging. We can address these issues. It's going to take collaboration and cooperation. Collaboration and cooperation with our neighboring communities, with the state government, with federal government, and with our county government. That's what I'll bring to the Rye City Council: experience in government, experience in business, and the ability to work together. Rye deserves it, and we really don't have any other choice.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Souza. You have a minute and a half for your opening.
I unmute myself. Hello, thank you, Leah. Thank you, League of Women Voters, Roz, John, Doug, for organizing this. It's a pleasure to be back here again, four years later, even though I said I wouldn't do it again. But four years ago, Ben Stacks, who's a colleague on council with me right now, we ran under a platform of respectful and inclusive government, fiscal responsibility, and really renewing and protecting Rye. We also ran with the logo or a tagline of "Moving Rye Forward," and that was our intent. And we got into office and we realized how much work we actually had to do in catching up, right? So I think we've made a lot of progress, but there's still much work to do, which is why I'm rerunning. Really proud of the work that we have done, you know, on a number of levels. Zoning is an issue. We've all talked about that. It was an issue in the prior debate as well. Trying to figure out how we tackle those sorts of issues that impact our whole community is going to be of paramount importance. And I think that the experience I have, having served Rye, not only as Rye City Council, but also as an active volunteer and mom in town, I think equips me well to continue to serve, and I hope to have that opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Henderson. You have a minute and a half for your opening. You may go ahead.
Thank you, Lee. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate. Thank you also to Julie, Ben, and Lisa. I look forward to tonight's discussion with you. My name's Bill Henderson, and I'm running for city council because I care deeply about our community. My wife Beth and I have lived in Rye for 27 years. We have owned two homes here. Our two boys grew up here and attended the public schools. When we came to Rye in 1994, we thought Rye was a special and welcoming community. More than ever, I believe that's true today, and I want to do all I can to keep it that way. I believe that I can make a positive contribution to Rye if I'm elected to the city council. I have a long career in law and in business. I'm a lawyer and CPA. I was formerly a federal prosecutor. I was a partner at the global accounting firm of Ernst &amp; Young in their forensic accounting group. I've traveled the world advising companies and helping clients solve problems, and I've served and advised many boards. I've been active locally. I coach in the Rye Little League. I've served on the school board audit committee. I've been a Meals on Wheels driver. I've served on the Board of Governors at the Applewamas Club for six years, three years as treasurer, and the last two years as president. Through my work and experience, I know what it takes to be an engaged and effective leader. If I'm elected, I promise to work hard every day and do my best for Rye. Rye's number-one challenge, and I mean this by a lot, is to prevent further incidents of flooding in Blind Brook. We've had catastrophic flooding four times in the last 14 years. Nothing else comes close, both as an economic issue, but more importantly, as a life and safety issue. If elected, I'll do all I can to make sure we solve this problem once and all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to candidate Stacks. You have a minute and a half.
Thanks, Leah, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. Yes, again, Julie and I are here asking for your votes, and that's really based on the fact that, you know, we do feel like we've gotten a lot accomplished the last three years, so three and a half years, almost four now. You know, as Julie mentioned, our platform was respectful and inclusive governance, fiscal responsibility, fiscal discipline, and then renewing and protecting Rye. In each one of those counts, we feel like we've done an admirable job, if not getting initiative started, rather than, you know, actually completing a number of them. You know, there's a lot of things that we've accomplished over the last three and a half years, anywhere from, you know, resolving all four of the city union contracts, which are out of contract when we started, you know, our 10 years. We stayed within the tax cap all three years and hope to again this year. We hired a very capable city manager and will certainly talk about a lot of these issues as we go through the evening. But there's a long list of accomplishments that we're very proud of. We think we've done a nice job. We'd like to continue that. We'd like to continue in service to the city that we all love so much. So, you know, I look forward to this evening of discussion, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the questions. Candidate Souza, you're going to go first. Flooding. In your span of control and the role of a city council member, what steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts in the area? You have a minute and a half.
I just lost audio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. So I think I got the question about flooding and what can we do in our span of control. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. Well, look, I think we have to look at every option of what we can do within our span of control. But I think the bigger issue is, this is bigger than Rye. The issues that we faced with Ida, you know, did not originate in Rye. We were a victim of this, but we also geographically are downstream in the Blind Brook. And when the Bowman Dam go, you know, gives way, well, not gives way, but crest, we get what we got. We got flash flooding, essentially. We also had unprecedented amount of rainfall. I was talking to George Latimer, I was talking to Catherine Parker, and we were all talking about how this is bigger than Rye. It's maybe even bigger than Westchester County. So what can we do? We can work with our state and federal officials to try to get attention and funding and support for Rye, because this is much bigger than us. Whether it's dredging, whether it's another retention pond upon SUNY Purchase, whether it is increased drainage basins in different parts of town and upstream as well. All of these things we have to mobilize, and to think that we can do it alone would be foolish. We need to partner. We need support, and we need to advocate very strongly for it.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to candidate Henderson. Same question. Flooding. In your span of control and the role of a city council member, what steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts in the area? You have a minute and a half.
Thank you. The flood we had on September 1 was the fourth catastrophic flooding of the Blind Brook in 14 years. We're very lucky that lives weren't lost. There must have been an excess of $100 million in economic losses, including Rye businesses, and really the Y, the fire department, the free reading room, and lots of people's homes were, you know, very, very badly damaged. We had a study done in 2014. There's been studies after studies after studies. The last one was after the Sandy in 2012. The report was issued in December 2014. It identified four upstream projects that needed to be done. They costed the projects, and then nothing happened. Now's the time to harness a sense of urgency while this is fresh on everyone's mind and stay on it. I believe we need to stay on this problem and not get off it until it's solved. I think we do need help. We need to involve our Westchester, state, and federal partners and also surrounding jurisdictions. But what we need is a sense of urgency. This needs to be top on the priority list in every city council meeting until it's solved. And what I would pledge to do would be to make sure that this stays as a priority for the city council. There's nothing, clearly nothing even close to as important as this.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to candidate Stacks. In your role as a city council member, in the span of your control in that role, what steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts in the area? You have a minute and a half.
Thank you. Well, the first thing that we did when, after we came into office in 2018, was we reinvigorated the New York Rising Flood Grant that had languished under the previous council. And so we got that started, and unfortunately, whether it was, you know, bureaucratic red tape or, you know, just the general glacial movement of municipal and federal and state help, that grant has not been employed yet. But the point is, is that we came into the end office, we recognized that there was an opportunity to get a grant, and we, you know, moved forward to get that in place. Now it's languished, and a lot hasn't been done with it. This crisis that we've just had is reinvigorating, you know, the activity around this. And to Julie's point, we absolutely need to engage, you know, folks beyond our borders, because it's not our problem alone. And so we need help from our, you know, county, state, and federal legislators and other, you know, governmental agencies like FEMA and the Army Corps to help us with this, because it is not just Rye's problem. So what we need to do as a council is bring everybody in, and just like all of our electeds were in Mamaroneck pledging help for their reconstruction, we need the same commitment from those electeds for us.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Tannenbaum. In your span of control and the role of city council member, what steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts in this area? You have a minute and a half.
As all of the other candidates said, key to this is working with our neighboring communities and working with our federal, state, and county elected officials. We've got to use every tool at our disposal to remediate the catastrophic events such as Ida. But it goes deeper than that. You know, this summer, my home flooded three times. Elsa, Henri, and Ida, and other homes in my neighborhood that had never had water flooded as well. There are dozens, maybe hundreds, of homes in Rye not impacted by the Blind Brook or Beaver Swamp that flooded this year, and we've got to ask why. So directly within the control of our city council is understanding what created this new flooding. Was it the trees that have been taken down? Is it the way that roads have been repaid? Is it work, let's say, that a Con Ed or a Suez did, and the way that they redid the roads? We've had more flooding this year than ever before. Again, nothing like the catastrophe of Blind Brook, but there's flooding all over Rye. We need to understand it. We need to act. We need to maintain our storm drains and clean them. So there are things directly in the control of the Rye City Council that can be done. But as everybody else said, to fix the larger problem, it's a community effort with our neighbors, and we need to work with our state assembly members.
Thank you, Detective Tannenbaum. Thank you. We're going to close that question for a moment. I am going to ask, though, does anyone have an additional 30-second rebuttal or comment related to this question before we move forward? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, candidate Henderson.
Yeah, I agree with Lisa. I just think that there are a lot of different reasons why different areas flood. Some are low-lying. Some are because of overdevelopment. There's also the Beaver Swamp, and there's Blind Brook. But what I would say is that the number-one problem is the Blind Brook, and we do need to look at all these other issues. And we can look at that as a city. We can look at our storm runoff system, whether or not that's working. But we need to focus on Blind Brook. That's where people are going to die if we don't get this fixed.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else before we move forward to the next question? Okay, all right. So let's move over to question number two, or beginning with candidate Henderson. City staff. There are a number of acting or interim positions and leading roles in the city staff. What next steps should the city take? You have a minute and a half.
Um, well, if there's an open position and they have moneyed up to hire, they should hire, especially if there's a need. I understand there's some interim positions where they're not intending to hire because of certain rules, and I think that's fine, too. But I think, you know, if there's a need in the city, and the city needs to fill it, they should fill it. I don't have much more to say than that.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go on to candidate Stacks. You have the same question. There are a number of acting or interim positions and leading roles on city staff. What next steps should the city take? You have a minute and a half.
Thanks. Well, I think perhaps the most important position was recently, over the summer, made permanent, and that's the city manager. As you know, the city manager functions as basically our CEO of the town, and the city staff reports to him. And so we thought it was very important to, a few years ago, make the transition to the interim city manager, who then we promoted to the full-time city manager. But the folks underneath him will fall into place now that he has been made the permanent city manager. So it was a very deliberative process. We wanted to make sure we had the right person. We found the right person. We have all the confidence in the world in him, and he's been doing a fantastic job, and which is why we made him the permanent city manager. But now that's all going to fall into place. The rest of it will. There'll be additional hires, you know, and he's going to continue to fill out his staff. And I think we've set him up for quite a lot of success and are looking forward to his tenure as our new city manager.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Tannenbaum. You have the same question. There are a number of acting or interim positions and leading roles in the city staff. What next steps should the city take? You have a minute and a half.
Well, as a city, and just like a business, personnel management is one of the most important things that you can do. You know, most of the personnel matters are handled in closed session by the city council. So we do know that the city manager is now permanent, which is great. And I think that the council and the city manager should move as quickly as possible to give the people in the positions the stability they would like to have and deserve with permanent positions, not interim. I think that's key, and the position should be given to the most qualified individuals, making sure that we fill out the staff properly.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Souza. You have the same question. There are acting or interim positions and leading roles on city staff. What next steps should the city take? You have a minute and a half.
I'm not even going to take a minute and a half. Ben said it. We, you know, the most important hire was getting Greg Usri into the position he's in right now, finding the most qualified candidate, which is happened to be Greg Usri, in that role, and so that he can help start filling out roles. We don't actually have a huge number of interim roles. I can think of one that's outstanding right now, and I bet that will be filled by election day. So I think that we, you know, we have a very seasoned and stable group of leaders, you know, our city engineer, our city planner, our head of parks and rec, and that have been here in this community for a long time, really delivering for the city. And obviously, you know, trying to succession plan will be a goal, and making sure that we have continued stability. But I'm super optimistic about where the city is right now and the leadership we have in place.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any rebuttal or further 30-second comment before we move on? Just raise your hand if so. Otherwise, we'll move forward. Yes, go ahead, candidate Henderson.
Yes, I just would second that about Greg Usri. I think he's done a fantastic job, and I'm really happy that the council's made him the permanent city manager.
Okay, great. Anyone else before we move to the next question? No? Okay. All right, question three goes to candidate Stacks first. The pandemic. What are your thoughts on how to restore the downtown Rye area and the small businesses that have suffered during the pandemic? You have a minute and a half.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think, look, it wasn't perfect. I think we are trying to be as responsive as possible to, you know, to the needs of, you know, the citizens of the town and the businesses and everybody that uses our, you know, our downtown area, you know, folks from out of town. And so, you know, we decided to close down Purchase Street, and I know it was a, you know, it was a hot-button issue for folks. But we were, you know, frankly, and I'll admit it, we were doing it on the fly, because I don't think anybody, any of us had ever been through a pandemic before, and certainly tried to, you know, manage through the needs and changes that were brought to us every day. You know, in hindsight, you know, I would still probably make the same decision, because we were just left with not a lot of options at that time. But I think for sure, you know, one of the tasks for the new council will be to go through and, you know, assess the response. P.S. We're still in the pandemic. Assess the response that we've had, and if, you know, God forbid this happens again in the future, we'll have, you know, we can plan better and, you know, plan what to do in case this happens again. So, look, again, as I said, it wasn't perfect. We did the best that we could at the time, and I think it worked out okay. And, you know, we'll reassess everything that we did and look back and, you know, plan for it.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to candidate Tannenbaum with the same question. What are your thoughts on how to restore the downtown Rye area and the small businesses that have suffered during the pandemic?
Downtown Rye is a treasure, and we should all do everything that we can to support the businesses there, the restaurants and the merchants. During the beginning of the pandemic, when Purchase Street was closed, it was wonderful for our restaurants and helped them survive. Now we need to look at other opportunities to bring more people to Rye and bring more people to our downtown restaurants and merchants. Over the summer, I met some people who had moved into the new apartment complex in Harrison, West Harrison, right on 287. It's called Caraway, and they were talking about restaurants and run. That apartment complex is going to have about 1,000 people living there, basically on 287 in an office park. It occurred to me that Rye was really the closest town to them. I talked to the management of Caraway, and we arranged a welcome-to-Rye event for the residents there. They're not Rye voters, but they can shop and they can dine in Rye. That's the kind of creative thinking I think we need for our downtown to help our merchants, help our restaurants, and continue to thrive and grow.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to candidate Souza. The same question. What are your thoughts on how to restore the downtown Rye area and the small businesses that have suffered during the pandemic?
I love this question, because I am the city council liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, and when the pandemic hit, as Ben said, absolutely, we were reacting in real time, and with the whole goal of how do we help and support. And I have to say that the collaboration between the city council and the Chamber of Commerce and its merchants was exceptional. I mean, Tony Koash, Liz Woods, Brian Jackson, and all the leaders of the Rye Chamber of Commerce, God bless you. I mean, it was such a singular focus on doing the best we could for as many as we could. The Rise Up campaign encouraging people to come and dine and shop downtown. The outdoor seating, which, though there were a couple disgruntled shop owners, it was overwhelmingly well-received. And I had calls from Mamaroneck and Harrison and other neighboring towns saying, "How did you do this?" You know, "And how do you have such a collaborative relationship with your Chamber of Commerce?" This is enviable. So it was, I mean, I think it's that. It's continuing to work and get creative. Things like downtown trick-or-treating to bring people downtown. We had other special events throughout the course of the year, and the chamber still is applying that creative thought, and the city council is helping enable that and approving the permits that they need to help bring people down, whether they're local Rye residents or beyond. But it's, this is a work in progress, and that strong relationship is the bedrock of future success, I think.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Henderson, you have the same question. What are your thoughts on how to restore the downtown Rye area and the small businesses that have suffered during the pandemic?
Thank you. Right now, it's really not businesses that have suffered from the pandemic. It's businesses on the Blind Brook side of Purchase Street that have suffered from the flood. And we still have a lot of businesses that are not operating because of the flooding. And this all gets back into, what are we going to do about the flood? But as far as the pandemic goes, I don't fault the city council for the actions they took. This pandemic was the first one in, what, 100 years? And I think the council really managed very well through it. I think they did what they could to help out the restaurants. I know some of the merchants weren't so happy when we closed Purchase Street. What I would say is, now that we've had this experience and we've seen this, you know, we learned from it. And maybe it means after the pandemic is over, we look at what happened, what we did, how it all worked. Maybe it means we come up with a new program for closing Purchase Street in the evenings. I think we have to reach out and make sure all our merchants' voices are heard, or maybe it means we just go back to the way things were. But generally, I think the city council did a very good job in managing through the pandemic.
Thank you very much. Okay, does anyone have a, yes, go ahead, candidate Tannenbaum.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce that I agree with Bill 100%. The disaster on Purchase Street and how those merchants have suffered is horrible. And we have to make sure that we mitigate the flood damage and make sure it doesn't happen again. Even a non-small business, Starbucks, the last time I was in town earlier this week, has not yet reopened. So a company with unlimited resources is still not able to open. So think about what that means for our small individually-owned businesses.
Thank you. Okay, any further rebuttal comment before we move on to the next question? I'm not seeing any. All right, let's move on. So this question goes first to candidate Tannenbaum. Development. How urgent is a new master plan, and should the city place a moratorium on subdivisions and tear downs pending its implementation? Development, how urgent is a new master plan and should the city place a moratorium on subdivisions and teardowns pending its implementation?
I can't overestimate the importance of a new master plan. And again, with flooding at the top of the list. We've had unbelievable flooding in Rye and we really don't know what's causing it. We don't know if it's been trees, if it's been the teardowns and building of other houses. We just don't know. And we really need to put the brakes on until we can figure out what's going on. At the same time, we have residents in homes that really represent our life savings. And we need to make sure that we're not doing anything that suppresses the value of their homes. I'd like to work with the state on potentially a first time home buyer and help promote some of the state programs that are available for first time home buyers. We want to be a community that has a diversity of real estate. You know, Rye's unique in the fact that we've got tiny houses and huge houses. And I'd like to keep it that way. So we definitely need a master plan.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Sousa. It's the same question. How urgent is a new master plan and should the city place a moratorium on subdivisions and teardowns pending its implementation?
So yes, we should insert, institute a moratorium and we have on, on the kinds of development that we feel are probably most egregious in terms of conducive to raising of trees and whatnot. So flag lots, flag developments and flag lots, awkwardly placed homes on real estate, steep slope development. All of that has a moratorium placed against it as we look at reevaluating our zoning laws to make sure that the spirit of the law matches the intent. I agree with Lisa that we do want there to be diversity of housing and that, you know, part of the charm of Rye is, you know, the, the, the nature and the trees and all of that. And so we have to be very mindful of what overdevelopment can do to our community. Master plan, absolutely, we should be updating the master plan. I am quite thankful that we didn't, you know, when we first came into office, we, we tried to make sure we understood the lay of the land before we jumped into a new master planning process. And I'm grateful for that because I think COVID changed everything. I think how people use the city, how people park, where they park, how often they commute. All will, you know, will have an impact. And so I think as COVID starts to, you know, the new normal sets in, it'll be a really good input to a new master plan and we look forward to embarking on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, candidate Henderson, the same question. How urgent is new master plan and should the city place a moratorium on subdivisions and teardowns pending its implementation?
So I don't know. Yes, we need to get on with this master plan. I think it's urgent that we review and strengthen our zoning and building codes and environmental regulations. We can't stop development, but we can better control it. We can put up stronger guardrails around it. We need smart development. So we need to strengthen our zoning laws and our building codes and our environmental setbacks. We need to look at existing rules regarding the house size, sizes, clear cutting, trees, storm runoff. We need to strengthen processes at the Board of Architectural Review and the Planning Commission that we need to actually change the building codes so that these commissions can, can, can do a better job. And, and, and that's an important thing because, because, because of the, the the codes really need to be strengthened. I would say we don't want to wait for the master plan to do this. I think we want to, we want to get started on this. This will be part of the master plan. But I don't know when, when this master plan is going to be finished. My preference would be, we know, we know we have issues. It's actually because Rye is such an expensive place to live that we have this kind of development. We can't let developers determine what the future of Rye is going to be. We need, we need, the citizens need to do that. And so I think this is one area and with, with the recent flooding from Ida, I think that exposes a lot of the issues around development and there should be a greater sense of urgency about it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to candidate Stacks. You have the same question. How urgent is a new master plan? Should the city place a moratorium on subdivisions and teardowns pending its implementation?
Actually, I, I thank Bill for his comments because it's, I think that's really spot on. The, you know, if, if folks know about the master plan process, yes, it's really important. Yes, it actually takes a long time. And so I think we've got some urgent things that we have to deal with, which Bill highlighted about specific, you know, zoning codes, about the process that, that people go through to get approvals to, you know, change their properties or tear down properties or, you know, subdivide or what have you. I think those are more important issues to deal with immediately because the master plan process takes a long time and it's extremely important and we should definitely do it. The last time it was updated was 1985. So, you know, things have changed a lot since then. We've had COVID. We've had all sorts of flooding issues. So definitely need to do that. But in the, in the more immediate term, to Bill's point, we need to address some of these other things that are daily, you know, kind of quality of life issues about how people are living in their houses, what's happening next door. You know, the, the fear of, you know, trees coming down or, you know, clear cutting a lot or, you know, two houses being placed on a tiny lot, things like that are more immediate to people. And these are things that we need to address. And to Julie's point, we actually did an institute a moratorium earlier this year to deal with some of these specific issues that were real thorns in the side of the community. So we are hearing the community and we're addressing that. We will get to the master plan.
Thank you. Okay, is there any, is there a rebuttal or another? Yes, go ahead, candidate Sousa.
I just wanted to say that there's, there's also a fine line there and I, that between, you know, defending one's property rights as well, right? So to the extent that I think we're all in violent agreement that these laws need to change and that we need to get a handle on our zoning laws, there must also be a respect for, you know, personal property rights. And so finding that balance, I think, is also really important. And so I only bring that up because, you know, I always say if it was simple, it would be done. So it, it, you know, getting it right is, is a harder thing to do because there's a balance you're trying to strike. But I think we're all up for the challenge of that.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Henderson, did you have a comment too?
Yes, I just want, Julie took the words right out of my mouth. We, this needs to be done thoughtfully and we need to respect property rights. We don't, we don't, you know, homeowners have invested a lot in this town and we want to preserve their investments. I think if we do do this smart, it will increase home values, not decrease. And, but we do need to be very careful and thoughtful about how we do this.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Stacks, I saw you and then afterwards candidate Tannenbaum. Go ahead, candidate Stacks.
Thanks. I mean, I think, you know, when people look at municipalities or other governmental functions, they always think that it takes a long time. I think one of the reasons why folks may look at us and say, geez, things take a long time is we, at least on this council, we've been very collaborative. We have been focused on listening to people. We want to get everybody's input before we make rash decisions or, you know, so we don't make rash decisions without input from the, from the public. So I think one of the hallmarks of this particular council has been a sense of collaboration of hearing the community. So.
Thank you. Thank, okay, candidate Tannenbaum, go ahead.
And yes, I agree with everything that Bill said in terms of needing to have some immediate actions. And one of those is in regard to trees. I was pretty shocked that we don't have a trained arborist forester that comes and looks at trees to determine if they should be, if they need to be maintained or if they should be taken down. Trees are an incredible sponge. I mean, the trees help protect us against flooding. And right now we need stronger tree management today in Rye. It's critical and it's something we've got to do.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next question. It's first to candidate Sousa. Fiscal policy, what is your position on where the city is financially? And what would you recommend going forward in terms of spending, budget, tax cap, new revenue sources and other fiscal policy?
I think it's, I think those of us on council right now are extremely proud of the fact that we have stayed under the cat, tax cap every year we've been in office and we're finishing the pandemic, 2020 pandemic year without a deficit. That is a testament to exceptional fiscal management at the city level. You know, and, and the city council level too, making sure that we were, you know, putting the pause on some things where we needed to, to make sure that the burden doesn't fall to the taxpayers. That said, we have an incredible amount of capital projects that need attention and we have to, we have to find a way to do it. The year before I ran for council, the first time I attended all the city council meetings the year prior to that. And I saw the capital improvements plan come up and it would, they'd get reported on over, you know, multiple times over the course of the year, yet nothing happened. Right? So this council is, is starting to chip away at that list. There's, you know, $65 million worth of project, 99 specific projects in the capital improvements plan. So I think we have to be really responsible about that bonding in a way that is responsible is important. And, and I honestly say, I mean, you know, I was once accused of turning over the couch cushions for loose change. And we will, we should because our alternative is raising taxes on our neighbors, on our friends, on ourselves. And so fiscal discipline is absolutely critical to everything we do and it, it guides a lot of our decisions. Responsible fiscal decision making is important.
Thank you. All right, it's for candidate Henderson now. What is your position on where the city is financially? And what would you recommend going forward in terms of spending, budget, tax cap, new revenue and other fiscal policy?
My understanding and reading the financials of the city's finances are in good shape. One recommendation is keep tax increases as low as possible. The city's taxes are only 16% of the total real estate tax bill that our residents get. 60% is the school, 23% is the county. But, but within that 16%, I think we need to do all we can to keep taxes down. So our taxes are very high and we want to be, we don't want people to have to leave Rye because they can't afford to live here. And that's, that's a real, real problem for Rye, I think. Other, other than that, I don't have any, I have not been part of the budgeting process at the city council. I look forward to really rolling up my sleeves and getting, getting my fingers dirty if and when I'm on the council. And at that point, I would, I would have probably more detail to, to tell you about.
Okay, thank you. Next, it's for candidate Stacks. Same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I'm good. Thanks. So that was one of the, the campaign issues that we ran on last time. You know, just as an example, the previous administration before we came in had disbanded the finance committee. One of the things that we did when we first got into office was, was reconstituted that for the exact reason of all of the questions you just asked about managing, you know, tax increases, keeping the tax cap, other revenue sources and, you know, maintaining the fact that the city has a triple A credit rating. You know, all of that has been extremely important to us and was certainly one of the things that we ran on because, you know, dovetailing all of this stuff together, it all has to work, right? You know, we're, we're trying to, you know, be more responsive and, and, you know, increase services to the city while also making sure that we're not spending too much money, but also while making sure that we keep up with infrastructure too. So this has been a primary focus of this council. Should, I'll speak for Julie. Should Julie and I win again, it'll continue to be that way. It has been paramount in all of our discussions as to how we manage the city's finances. And we've been very keen on making sure that we are, you know, keeping to the tax cap. We are looking at other revenue sources. And as Julie mentioned, we did turn over the couch when we first came in in 2018 to look for all sorts of coins that were still on the couch. So, thank you.
Okay, we're going to candidate Tannenbaum with the same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Um, no, that's okay. I've got it.
Okay.
I agree with much of what has been said. Rye is in very good shape financially. And I think it is admirable that they restarted the finance committee because it's very important for open government. We have some very talented people in Rye and harnessing their expertise to help with the budget management is important. Nobody likes property taxes. They're probably the most hated tax that there is. As Bill mentioned, the city portion of our property taxes is the lowest portion. So what we need to do for our city and to get the big things done, like Save the Sound lawsuit, things we need to do to our sewage system, our infrastructure. We need to partner and harness the funds that the county, state and federal government can make available to us. Westport just got $2.8 million to dredge their river in harbor. By working with our federal government and ensuring that Rye will cover a portion of it, we can get that kind of funding too.
Thank you. Okay, before we move forward, does anyone have another 30 second comment for this particular question? No, I see none. We'll move forward. Our next question is directed first to candidate Henderson. Capital projects, what do you consider the most important capital, capital projects to be addressed with the city's infrastructure outside of flood related projects?
Well, I would put flood related projects first for obvious reasons. And, and, but outside of that, we have a, a big issue related to the dredging of Milton Harbor and the boat basin. How we're going to pay for that and, and, and the amount that's going to cost is, is, is not been decided yet. I think that's, that's a big issue on the horizon for the city. This past year, money was spent, a good deal of money was spent, believe it or not, on repaving the roads. I've, I've walked around Rye to a lot of neighborhoods in the last two months and by a large amount, amount, when I ask people, you know, what's their biggest complaint about Rye? It's the roads. It's the roads. It's the roads. It's the roads. And so I, I do commend the city council. I think they have really taken this to heart and have put money towards the roads. And, and I believe, I believe things are getting better, but I think it's going to take a while. And also I think we need to get, really press our, our, our government colleagues up in Westchester to pave the roads that they're responsible for. I mean, some of our roads are just atrocious. Especially roads like Theodore Fram. So, so, so those are the big things. And now there's been money spent on, on police vehicles and other city building improvements, but those aren't a lot of money. But I, but I think it's really, it's really about the flooding and the roads are the top two.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to candidate Stacks with the same question. What do you consider the most important capital projects to be addressed with the city's infrastructure outside of flood related projects?
Certainly flood related projects are at the top of the list, but thanks that, you know, I think we've identified it that we, again, came into office realizing that, you know, a lot of the infrastructure needs of the city have been ignored for many years. So we, we set about first to get a reliable, consistent, transparent paving program done to pave all the roads that, that I agree have been, you know, really neglected. And we had, the previous council had let the, the paving budget slip to, you know, at least a million, if not less of, of annual expenditure, which is clearly not enough to keep up. I think that here we're going to spend about 2.1 million on, on roads. That will continue. But, you know, the other infrastructure too, look, this is an old town. There's a lot of aging infrastructure. We've started the process with a lot of the, the city buildings. Those are, you know, in some cases falling down. The city hall air conditioning, people may not be surprised. It's 50 years old at least. It's in desperate need of repair. So there's a lot of stuff that, that, you know, requires immediate attention. So we're trying to address a whole bunch of different things outside of flooding at the same time. Yes, there's, you know, sewer issues coming. Yes, there's dredging. We need to dredge. We need to make sure that the ride boat basin is viable. But there's a whole lot of things in front of us that we need to address.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to candidate Tannenbaum with the same question. What do you consider the most important capital projects to be addressed with the city's infrastructure outside of flood related projects?
Well, there are projects for infrastructure that will help with flooding, but you wouldn't necessarily have labeled flood related. Like the work we need to do in the sewage system in compliance with Save the Sound lawsuit and the dredging of Milton Harbor and the boat basin. The city needs to actively participate in these projects and take that responsibility seriously. We can't cede responsibility to just a volunteer run commission. We need to work with them and help to get these projects done. There's also Rytown Park, which is really the jewel of our community. Rye owns 40% of the park and we share it with the town of Rye. We need to collaborate with the town of Rye to come together and take advantage of the grants that we can. We need to collaborate with the town of Rye to come together and take advantage of the grants that we can receive and fund to restore those buildings. There's stucco coming down that could hit somebody. The park's beautiful and it's been doing really well over the past few years. But it can be even more beautiful and it is the treasure of Rye and we need to cherish it and restore it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to candidate Sousa with the same question. What do you consider the most important capital projects to be addressed outside of flood related projects?
I agree with Bill and Ben here. Roads, sewers, um, to Lisa's point, we have settled the Save the Sound lawsuit and have, um, a substantial list of things that we're going to be doing there. So that is in the works as is, um, the deploying of funds towards these, this never ending list of capital improvements, the salt shed, the fuel tank, deep, the, uh, Building Five at DPW, City Hall HVAC system, the courthouse renovations. These are all things that have been sitting at the top of the priority list for this capital improvement plan, um, and hanging out there. So, so we're knocking those off. I mean, there is a way of prioritizing things. There are some things that sound like they're great to do, but maybe don't have as much of an impact, um, to the city or have the priority. If you look at something like the courthouse, we're mandated to make the changes we're making there. So while Rytown Park is wonderful and be great to do as much as we could do there, we have, we have actually legally, legal obligations to prioritize something like the courthouse. So, you know, roads, absolutely. I agree with Ben. We have been consciously trying to double the amount of, of road repair from a worst to first sort of a prioritization. Um, and I know once we get to first, we'll be back at the top again. So it's the somewhat Sisyphean task, but you, you keep at it. No shortage of capital improvement and infra, infrastructure plans in front of us. And I agree that flooding is at the top of the list.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right. Before we move on to the next question, does anyone have a thirty second further comment or rebuttal? No? Okay. All right, let's move on then. This question, we will begin with candidate Stacks. In April twenty twenty one, the Westchester County Board of Legislators reached a settlement agreement with Playland Operators, Standard Amusements. What is your position about the future of Playland and how do you plan on ensuring Rye will have a voice going forward?
Well, given that it's entirely bounded by, uh, Rye itself, um, we, we need to have a productive, constructive relationship with not only the county with respect to the, to Playland, but also with the operator. So, um, I honestly have much to say about it, other than it is an extremely important issue for Rye that we need to, you know, make sure that we've got, um, a say in what goes on, that we are having dialogue with the county, to make sure that we know what's happening, that we also have a dialogue with Standard Amusements. In fact, I think we've already started those dialogues directly with Standard, um, to work on, you know, issues of mutual concern, you know, obviously the, you know, all the traffic comes through Rye to get there. There are a number of services that we provide to them. Um, and so, you know, I think that, having a good relationship is paramount for us because, you know, it is basically with, you know, a hundred percent within our borders. So, um, I, I think it's a, you know, something that we will continue to focus on and make sure that we have a seat at the table. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to candidate Tannenbaum with the same question. In April twenty twenty one, the Westchester County Board of Legislators reached a settlement agreement with Playland Operators, Standard Amusements. What is your position about the future of Playland and how do you plan on ensuring Rye will have a voice going forward?
I love Playland. Um, seeing the Playland sign was one of the reasons that I moved to Rye. George Latimer also loves Playland and I know that he worked as hard as he could to keep Playland within the county control. Unfortunately, the standard agreement was signed by the prior administration and, um, we need to abide by it as they are. He made several improvements to the contract and Rye will have to do our best to work with Standard. I live right across the street from Playland. Um, it's very important to me. And I will do whatever it takes to create a good collaborative and cooperative relationship with Standard so that we can represent the residents of Rye and keep Playland the treasured place that it is.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to candidate Sousa. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think probably the viewing audience, all four of you, uh, know what this is. My friends are watching it after. They're going to watch and, and, uh, take back. The issue really in front of us is that fact that we don't own Playland. Yes, it lives in Rye. It's in our borders. We don't own it. We don't control it. That is completely county controlled property, as is the, uh, contract with Standard. So we, we didn't by law and structure have a seat at the table. You know, to, but, but that doesn't mean we can't sort of pull up a chair and, and have a casual conversation. And that's what we're doing. Uh, we're talking, uh, Josh Cohn, our current, uh, and wonderful mayor, has started a dialogue along with our city manager with Standard Amusements to talk about all the things that, uh, Ben mentioned. How do we make sure that our emergency response systems aren't taxed, that our roads aren't further eroded by traffic to Playland? That they're helping, um, you know, keep up the support of Rye as a community when they're using it for their, for their commercial gain. So, um, so that's all very important. And obviously, you know, George, living near Playland and being a resident in Rye and caring about the property is helpful. So continuing that dialogue with him, I agree with Ben, is, is really important. Um, but Playland's great. We're lucky to have it. Um, and we just need to make sure that, um, our community is protected, uh, along the way.
Thank you. Okay, now to candidate Henderson with the same question. Do you want me to repeat the question for you?
No, I, I, I think I got it. So, um, I take my cues from, uh, Janice Seitz on this. She's been very involved in this issue and she's, she's thrilled that Standard Amusements is taking over Playland. I think if we've learned anything over the years, I've been here twenty four, um, twenty seven years in Rye. It's that Westchester doesn't know how to run an amusement park. And, and so, um, I think it's, 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 it's really good that we have Standard in there. They're going to invest millions of dollars in rides, foods and other improvements. Uh, they renegotiated the contract and the county gets increased oversight and improved financial terms. I, 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 if Janet thinks it's a good deal, I think it's a good deal for Rye. I think we should monitor it closely. We want to make sure that they're a good neighbor and, and, and they're doing all the things that, that, that need to be done. Um, but I, I think overall we should be happy that Standard's in there.
Thank you. Okay. Any further thirty second comment or rebuttal before I move on? Nope. Okay. So we are moving on to our last, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, candidate Tannenbaum.
Um, I do want to say that under George Latimer's administration, I think Playland has been running wonderfully. The parking lot was jammed this year. There were thousands of people enjoying Playland. And I know that prior to that pandemic in two thousand nineteen, there was record attendance. So I think county's done a great job with Playland and I look forward to Standard continuing that.
Okay. Any further comment or rebuttal before we move on? No? Okay. All right, thank you. So now we're moving on to our last question of the evening. Okay, I mean, it's going to be directed first to candidate Tannenbaum. What topic have we not covered tonight that you would like to address?
There are so many. And we really have not talked about, um, the planning at Rye Golf. Rye Golf has been looking at a major capital master improvement plan or change that would involve cutting over a hundred trees. And somehow this plan has been going forward without the city council knowing about it or being involved. The boat basin is another example. The boat basin in Milton Harbor, um, need attention. There's environmental concerns. They have to be dredged and the council needs to be actively involved. The idea that these are enterprise funds, um, and that it's kind of hands off for the city, to me, doesn't make any sense. They are multi-million dollar assets that belong to the people of Rye. We also have fantastic nonprofit organizations within our borders such as Wayne Wright House. Wayne Wright needed, um, had an idea with Row America that the city council decided not to go forward with. I initially thought that meant that the council had a plan that would help Wayne Wright financially survive, but it turned out there was no other plan and Wayne Wright is really scrambling. These nonprofits are amazing. They make Rye what it is. Wayne Wright, the Rye Arts Center, the Rye Nature Center, and we need to talk about them, support them and keep Rye the wonderful city that it is.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to candidate Sousa with the same question. What topic have we not covered tonight that you would like to address?
I mean, I, I think it would be more of a philosophical question of what makes for a good city council member and a good functioning city council. And, and I would argue those are, are more qualities in some cases than a particular point of view because you soon learn you're one of seven trying to make decisions in the best interest of the city. So, so what kind of qualities are important, uh, in a council member? I think, you know, I would, I would offer forth, you know, temperament is one of them, being able to work well with others and collaborate. And, um, there's a lot of, uh, uh, you know, conceding that you sometimes do and cooperation and that you don't always get your way and being okay with that and working well with others, I think is an important skill to have. I also think, um, that involvement and engagement in the community is important. Being able to, you know, access different pockets of people, whether you're involved in a nonprofit or you're a coach or you're in the PTO or you're active in your church or something. I think, um, being able to access people's opinions and bring those in and bring those people in because you have a sense of community, that's super important too. And then I think largely just having a really, um, you know, focused interest on what's best for Rye. Right? Not partisan, not trying to push your own agenda, but really be focused on, you know, we're volunteers. Right? We're just doing this to make our community better and to give back to our community. And sort of that ethos, bringing that to the table, I think is super important. So, um, that would be my answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, now on to candidate Henderson. What topic have we not covered tonight that you would like to address?
One topic is supporting our police and ensuring that, uh, we have public safety in a time when, um, in New York, we now have this no bail law. Um, we have seen an increase in carjackings. A lot of people coming from Connecticut, I understand. It's very important that we support our police and that means making sure they have the, the right training, oversight and tools. The worst thing that could happen is we have an incident of excessive force. Of course, you know, we, we don't want anyone to get hurt, um, who doesn't deserve to be hurt. But, but more importantly, or, or as important, it could really damage, um, the reputation of the town. And so, so in this time that we're in right now, uh, you know, in the age of smartphones, that's a really important issue to make sure that, that our police are, have the right tools and the right training to do their jobs. I just would say the new marijuana law is also something that we're going to need to keep our eye on. And, 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 um, I think the city council was right to opt out of, out of the marijuana law. It, it's a September twenty second meeting. Um, we don't know what the regulations are going to be. So it was sort of a no brainer to opt out right now. But I think going forward, we're going to have to think about that and, and we want to, do we need to have no smoking areas around the schools and everything else? To stop dealing on the streets because, um, under the new law, you could, you could anticipate there'll be an increase in, in, in that too. So, so I think crime and, and, and supporting our police are a big issue.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to, um, candidate Stacks with the same question. What topic have we not covered that you would like to address?
Traffic and pedestrian safety. I think one of the biggest, um, or the most voluminous, uh, pieces of commentary that we get, uh, to the council, to the traffic and pedestrian safety committee and on various social media outlets, is commentary about the, you know, whether it's frankly bad behavior or, you know, the, the enforcement, um, that happens and as, I mean, I'm actually the, the liaison to the traffic and pedestrian safety committee. We always say at the meeting, you know, we can't have a police officer on every corner. So it really falls into, you know, um, behavior of folks, you know, violating traffic laws. I think that, um, we need, we as a city need to focus more on, um, you know, our collective behavior, you know, ways to mitigate, um, you know, some of the things that keep happening. You know, whether it's, you know, U-turns on Purchase Street across the double yellow line or, you know, y, you name it, people walking across the street at the Osborne Elementary School, which has been happening for all of the twenty years that, that I've lived here. We as a, as a city and as a community need to focus on this a lot more. And I think, um, we actually talked about it this afternoon, that it will become one of the primary issues that we deal with in the next administration. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further thirty second comment on this issue? Yes, candidate Stacks?
I, I just have a, a rebuttal comment to candidate Tannenbaum about the Rye Golf Club. I happen to be the city council liaison to the Rye Golf Club. And the only thing that's been going on right now is a planning process about the, the future of, of the course, which includes some redesign of some holes. So the notion that the club has been, uh, going and doing stuff without the knowledge of the city is completely false. The club as an enterprise fund is allowed to govern themselves with reporting to the city. So I just want to clear that up.
Thank you. All right, candidate Henderson, do you have your hand up too?
Yes, I did. Um, I just want to, um, uh, echo what Julie said about non-partisanship at, at the city council level. We're neighbors. We're not warring tribes here. Kind of partisanship that, that goes on in Washington and Albany has, it, it has no place in Rye. Um, we need to all work together. We need to like each other on the council to get things done for the citizens of Rye. Uh, nothing at city council level, as far as I'm concerned, should be partisan.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further comment before we move to closing statements? Go ahead, candidate Tannenbaum.
Um, I would like to comment back to Ben. Um, there are city council members who did not know about the plan at the golf course and some trees have already started to be taken down. Um, and again, many were unaware of the plan until that time. I do know that you met with a group of neighbors recently and, um, now it's going to get another look by the city council. I also want to say that I'm a Democrat and I'm running as a Democrat. But once you are elected and you serve, you serve all the people of Rye. Serving is nonpartisan. Running, you run on values.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any further comment from someone who had not already commented? On this rebuttal period. Okay. So now we're going to move to closing statements and we are going to be, these are one and a half minutes and this is in reverse order, uh, to the opening statement. So we're going to begin with candidate Stacks. You may go.
Thanks. And, uh, thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this and thanks to the folks that have joined to watch. You know, I, I've personally enjoyed being on the council the last four years. Um, it's been quite an experience. I really feel like my, my temperament, my background, um, and my, um, desire to collaborate to, to work on collective solutions, um, has really served me well. You know, we don't always agree, but you know, our discourse is very important, our, our process is very important and the collaboration, um, that I think we should all bring to this, uh, job is, is paramount. And I think that folks that bring, you know, uh, partisan behavior or, um, agendas or, or other items to the council are really deleterious to the overall process. We're a small town. Um, we have a lot of issues, uh, whether it's flooding, infrastructure, traffic and pedestrian safety, what, you know, development, what have you. There's a lot of different things that we need to work on that we really don't have time to spend, um, you know, working through, you know, uh, you know, um, folks that don't want to collaborate and folks that are trying to drive particular agendas. So, um, I asked for your vote. Uh, I, you know, I think we've, as a council, done a great job. We have a long list of things to do and I'd like to continue in the role. So thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to candidate Henderson with your closing statement, a minute and a half.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Lee, and thank you to all, um, voting, uh, the ones with the stop signs and, and, and everything's been, uh, been a really great debate. Uh, November second, the voters of Rye will have a decision to make. There's four seats on the city, city council that are up for election for four year terms, including the mayor. Those elected will have much to do, most importantly, in efforts to solve our number one problem to preventing further catastrophic flooding of the blind river. In addition, there are a host of other priorities. There's creating the new master plan, reviewing and strengthening our environmental and building codes, which we talked about, coming up with a way to finance a dredging in Milton Harbor and the boat basin, supporting our police, increasing Supporting our police, increasing public safety in the era of increasing crime and the no bail law. Addressing the new New York State marijuana law. There are many other issues, including of course fixing the roads. And last, but certainly not least, doing all this in a fiscally prudent way without substantially raising our taxes. I know Rye, having lived here 27 years, I believe I have the background and experience to make a real difference in helping Rye solve these issues. I know how to approach problems, ask questions and drill down to get answers. I've never seen an organization that can't improve its effectiveness. And I don't think the city of Rye is any different. There's much to do and the city council needs to work together. None of the issues of crucial importance in Rye are partisan issues. As we see every day on the news in Washington, Albany, partisanship is poison to good government, getting things done. I pledge as elected to do all I can to work with my fellow council members and keep partisanship out of the Rye City Council. Thank you for those at home for watching, caring about Rye. A number per second will be up to you, the voters. I hope to get your vote and we'll be honored to serve you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move to candidate Susa for your closing statement.
Sure. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you. Rye, those of you who tuned in and, and all of those of you who put your, your faith, your confidence in me four years ago and in, in Ben and in Josh. We've worked really hard. This is, this is the hardest volunteer job I've ever had. And that includes being co-president of the Midland PTO right now. So I think that it is, you know, it's incumbent upon those of us who seek this office to understand what. You know, what the point is, which is serving, right? This isn't about, as far as I know, you know. No one else hopefully has these higher ambitions. I know Ben and I certainly don't have higher political ambition. It is really. Just about serving the community that we love and that we are active participants and members in. So. I would just like to, to conclude with thanking those running. It takes, it takes some stamina to run. But let me warn you, even more to serve. It has been a true pleasure serving Rye and I hope to have the opportunity to continue to do so.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to candidate Tannenbaum. You have a minute and a half your closing.
Thank you. And thank you, Bill and Julie and Ben and the League for sponsoring the debate. It can't be repeated enough. To achieve our common goals for Rye, we need to collaborate and cooperate. With our neighboring communities, the town of Rye, Mamaroneck, Harrison, even further north with the Blindbrook. And we need to collaborate and cooperate with all levels of government, county, state and federal. I know how to do that. I'm the only candidate who has worked closely with other levels of government and worked for our congressman in the federal government. Rye voters, collaboration and cooperation starts with you. Please reach out to me at lisa@lisatannenbaum.com. I want to hear what you love about Rye and what you think needs improvement. Please visit my website, lisatannenbaum.com and take a look at the endorsements I have from elected officials. The elected officials that we have to work with every single day to meet our goals for Rye. And most importantly, please honor me with your vote on November 2nd. Even better, vote early from October 23rd to October 31st. I'm excited to serve on the Rye City Council. Thank you for your time and thank you for your vote.
All right. That brings us to the end of our candidate forum. Thank you to all the candidates for participating. Replays of tonight's complete forum may be found on the League of Women Voters of Rye, Rye Brook and Portchester website. YouTube channel and on RCA TV. Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd at your regular polling locations from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. October 18th is the last day for the Board of Elections to receive absentee ballot applications. October 23rd through 31st is early voting. Please consult with the Board of Elections for locations. Thank you as well to the League of Women Voters of Rye, Rye Brook and Portchester for organizing and hosting this candidate forum. For the purpose of helping to inform voters so they can make an informed choice at the polls. I hope that you all have a great night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.